Hi, this is Jennifer Vatsa here and I wanted to give you a sneak peek. Look into our newly launched premium content. Shadow work tier that is available on our Patreon and our YouTube channel. This is the first month of doing it, so. Helpful if I had some, had my notes handy, but I do apparently. So I'm going to, this will lead into the video I did and I will provide links to what I'm including with. You know, the shadow work tier and also probably the self-love tier is like a PDF with all the journal prompts and information on it. So, you know, in the, in this video, I go through just a very brief intro to what is shadow work? Why it's important, how to do shadow work? And then kind of a preliminary exercise and the month one shadow journal prompts. Now, how I developed this particular methodology of doing shadow work? Cause there's a lot, there's a lot of different ways out there. I see different content creators making videos on it. I've seen courses on it. Various books and journals and stuff. What I found in my journey to be one of the most beneficial. Methods for doing shadow work that has, that, that. After, and I can say this after over a decade in therapy and under mental health treatment has rapidly. Progressed my integration and healing. And that is through, through doing 12 step work. There is a variety of 12 step work out there. I mean, it's not just alcoholics anonymous. Most is addiction based. But what I did was looking at that structure that comes with doing 12 step work. To kind of take the addiction focus out of it and to tailor it towards being. Shadow work to be more generalized as to how you can, you know, go through the prompts and. Really delve into your own personal shadow work, healing and integration and that process for you. So without further ado, this is January 2023's inaugural shadow work session. I'm releasing it to the public as a promotion for our premium contents. We have in addition to the shadow work tier, there's two lower tiers. One is for monthly oracle readings. There's general support tiers and or lower general support tiers as well. And there is a self-love, self-care tier, because that also will go hand in hand with the shadow work tier. And the crystal Reiki healing tier as well. With whatever tier you're at, you're at, you get whatever benefits are from the tiers below it. So if you're at the crystal healer level, you got the monthly crystal healing session ritual. You get the shadow work content, you got the self-love content, you got an oracle reading. And my undying love and respect for your support. So anyways, I hope you enjoy this and find it helpful. And I would love if you want to leave any feedback in the comments or if you want to contact me outside of YouTube. What you think of this? I would love feedback as I'm working to develop the content for the upcoming months. So anyways, thank you for watching and without further ado, here you go. Hi, it's Jennifer Vatsa from Belladonna's Botanicals. And this is the January 2023 premium content for the shadow work tier on YouTube and our Patreon. So I apologize for the lateness in producing this. Mercury retrograde just got me all in like one week this month and it's just been one thing after the other. So anyways, what I wanted to do with for this month is kind of walk you through. A little bit of like what is shadow work, why it's important? The supplies you'll need for doing this shadow work. Kind of course, and how I developed it, what the writing and journaling prompts will be for the month and. All that. So let's get started. So I have my notes here. So anyways, because I'm terrible at remembering things off the top of my head. So shadow work, what is it? So shadow work is done by accessing your unconscious mind to reveal and integrate the parts of yourself that are hidden. But manifest in your conscious body. This could be trauma responses, bad habits, a lack of self-love or acceptance amongst many other things. Shadow work can be done on your own or in tandem with a licensed mental health professional. Especially if severe trauma, drug and alcohol addiction or chronic mental illnesses are present. We will take a deeper dive into the Jungian shadow archetypes in the coming month. So shadow work is a concept that was originated from Carl Jung. You'll hear about that throughout this course. I don't think I got into it too much in this one, but. So why is shadow work important? The goal of doing shadow work is to integrate the shadow self in order to find balance. And become whole again. It's a process of integration. Shadow work and self-love are two of the most integral parts of a magical practice. And ones that are often overlooked when you fall, whether you fall into the spectrum of the love and light crowd or the, or like the left-hand path and practice dark magic. I've personally found even after decades of therapy, mental health treatments, that the most effective shadow work and integration. Integration came from doing 12 step work. Now, one does not have to be an addict to do 12 step work. I mean, there is multiple variations of it. Whether it's, you know, stuff that's under like alcoholics anonymous or debtors anonymous or codependents anonymous. And down the road, there's probably hundreds of different groups. While the, the traditional 12 step work tends to be focused on addiction and the, and the behaviors. Associated with addiction, my goal is to take the frameworks, to take the framework of the step work questions. And removing the specificities to addiction, although that may be part of your shadow work, you might involve things like. I mean, you know, some of the things like for me is like I. Overspent, you know, I buy, I buy, hey, I have lots of shiny things. Everywhere. So yeah, but that's part of my shadow, you know, then the shadow work that I've done is that. Well, why am I buying these things? It's to fill an emptiness that's inside of me. And it's something I've been working on progressively and you know, yeah, we talk, we joke about retail therapy, but. You know, it is a thing. So. Taking the framework of the 12 step questions and removing the specificities to addiction to make it a more general way of providing journal prompts. And a way for you to do your own shadow work. So how do you do shadow work? It suggested that you set aside some dedicated time to do shadow work on a regular basis. This is up to you. You might want to dedicate 20 minutes every night before bed or do it once a week. Or like me randomly, when you have the time to do so, whatever you choose to do is fine. It's best to do what works for you and not feel forced. And you might find that there's some months you whiz through the work, the shadow work and other ones. It might take you three months to get through that one part of it. So the set and setting are important for shadow work, but not mandatory. It suggests that you have a quiet place where you can listen to some ambient meditative music or bio nor beats if you like, or whatever works for you. Sometimes having a guided meditation helps. I can do shadow work while listening to Rammstein if I want. Yeah, what works for you, but that's just my suggestion. You can dim the lights, use candles, use like I have one of those color projector things that. You have checks like swirling clouds and stars on the ceiling. You can burn some incense or candles, whatever, however you want to set up your space for this. It's good to do it in a way where you're kind of pushing the other, like I wouldn't be watching television while doing it or trying to. You know, maybe sneak it in on a lunch break or something like that. Like I really want to have, be in the right headspace for doing shadow work. So our shadows are part of us and we can acknowledge them and work with them. Or we can ignore them and let them pull the strings from within. So the supplies that you'll need is a basic journal for doing shadow work, writing prompts. I have a million types of journals. This is kind of one of the ones I'm using. I think I got this one, this one on Killstar because. It has the unicidal hexagram on it. It's cool. So you know, we may eventually offer some journals on the Belladonna's Botanicals website. I just haven't gotten that far yet. You might want to work with a shadow crystal, like a particular crystal that's good for shadow work. My personal favorite is Wolfenite and a smoky celestial quartz. They're currently in a crystal grid for shadow work that's upstairs in my bedroom. So you may choose, I may give you a little list of some of the stones that will be, you can work with or being your primary shadow work crystal. And these are all ones that are particularly attuned to doing that type of work, but. These are some of my favorites. So you can work with, as I mentioned, I love Wolfenite. Celestial quartz is great, smoky celestial quartz, Rodinite, actually I have a cool show of my stuff. This is a cool Rodinite flame that I have. And whatever size or shape of the, the crystal is up to you, like. If you want to work with something, it's like a palm stone. This is also on the list and that's labradorite. This is like a flame shaped, but you know, there's a lot of palm stones that you can get if you want to work with. A carved shape or you want to work with. A tumbled crystal or raw crystal, whatever tends to work for you. If it's something you're holding in your hand, I do suggest there's something with a smoother surface. Like I have a really beautiful piece of Wolfenite that's in lemonite. It's just really. It's hard to describe the stone because like sometimes you could get like. Like gem quality Wolfenite, which is expensive, but. The stone, the whole thing itself was so brittle. And it had the texture of like holding of like a Brillo pad, like it was just very scratchy. So it was a hard stone for me to meditate with, like holding it in my hand. But it's not that, you know, I couldn't, you know, have it on my desk or in a, in a crystal grid, which is the way I have it right now. So whatever your preference is for that. That's what works for you. Rhydacrosite is also good. Apache tears are great. That's a type of black obsidian. Iolite, Labradorite and rutelated quartz. There are other stones that are great. You know, some people say like working with like darker stones, ones that are black or gray or, you know, in the darker end of the spectrum are better. You know, I don't think it necessarily needs to be the way, but if you have something that you're drawn to, that you feel like, oh my God, this is the stone I need to work with for this. By all means. And you can do it in any particular way or, or you can kill two birds with one stone and get a Labradorite candle holder. Holds like a little tea light in it, but like I said, I have a lot of, you know, things everywhere. Someday I should do a video tutorial of all my cool ass crystals. So before we get into the month one shadow work journal prompts. And these, and those will be based on the 12 steps is that. I want to give a preliminary exercise that you can do in your shadow journal. And I just have it broken down. It's four questions, but it's. Or four lists and I broke it down by list 10 memories that haunt you. It doesn't have to be 10. I just kind of arbitrarily picked a number and this can be from any point in time in your life and it could. It doesn't have to be, as they say, big T trauma or, you know. It can be little T trial, you know, trauma, like the things that accumulate in your life, like I have CPTSD. So for me, I have a lot of, I do have some big T trauma, but you know, the little stuff that kind of accumulates that informs a shadow response. That's part of me. So number one would be to list 10 memories that haunt you. Number two, 10 things you wish that you could change and this could be anything with. Like I want to drink less, you know, caffeine, or I want to stop vaping or. I want to treat my partner better, or I want to be, you know, not, I want to break this cycle or break this pattern, things like that. And really kind of going deeper from that, the next list would be 10 times you caused undue pain to yourself or others. And you could separate that into two lists because I know I'm good at inflicting pain on myself by. Not acknowledging a shadow or by a shadow kind of doing its thing and me just not, you know, working to integrate it enough. And then. The last on that will be 10 experiences that shaped who you are as a person. And these can be big things or little things like, you know, it's. Like what would I put on that list? I would be like, well, it was me at the age of six or seven realizing that. I believe my, my independent belief was in reincarnation because I had known I'd lived before. Don't know who explains that to a small Catholic child that reincarnation was a thing, but you know, that was something that shaped my life. Or like. I have a life of a lot of weird things happening to me. So my kindergarten teacher dropped dead of a heart attack in front of us in class. So that again is something that. Would, you know, fall into that category of things that shaped who you are as a person. Or, you know, memories that haunt you, you know, however it works for you. And it can be, you know, mundane things like I graduated college with a degree in blah, blah, or, you know, I met this, you know. I met my partner or, you know, I did therapy or I was diagnosed this, like big things that really kind of shaped who you are as a person. So those are the kind of, and that's going to help you get some kind of guidance and maybe discover a few things. That. Will help you in your journey. I maybe give you a little direction as we're doing month by month, working through the different questions. And I do suggest doing it by the month, by, by each month and not skipping around. So for month one, this is January. Our shadow work journaling prompts are going to be based on. You know, we admitted that we were powerless over our shadows and that parts of our lives have become unmanageable. To greater or lesser degrees. So the questions you want to answer with this, and I am going to provide a PDF of this. So you don't have to like watch the video and write everything down and I will include a link to that below. So the question number one, what fears do you have about doing shadow work? And this can be anything. I will leave, I'll leave that open. I, you know, I don't think it really needs a whole lot of explanation. It's, you know, facing your shadows and facing the darker parts of your personality and your, and your life can be a lot of work and. So what fears come up for you? Cause you really need to address that in this process. Two would be to make a list or chart of shadow behaviors, current actions. And consequences of those behaviors and any prompts that you feel to change or explore those things like. I'm trying to think of a good example of, of how to do that and whatever structurally makes sense to you. I don't. When I was doing 12 step work, I found it annoying with the kind of the way they structured forms, because it didn't make sense to me. But, and you might want to just mind map it, you know, I do that a lot and mind mapping is. I should do a video on that because that's actually really helpful. You kind of, you know, take things and kind of put them in bubbles. It's like a, it's like a sexy flow chart. But so make a chart or a list of the shadow behaviors. Any, you know, examples of that, you know, how it's affecting you currently, because sometimes we can have a shadow. That, okay, we've, we've corrected the behavior, but the shadow hasn't been fully integrated. Especially when you're, you're working with any kind of trauma that might come up. And, you know, any consequences of those behaviors. So we want to look at like, you know, in the addiction realm, if you were an alcoholic, did you get a, you know, a DUI or something like that? Or did you lose your job or something? It doesn't have to be big on that scale, but you know, think about consequences. And how you want to change. Those behaviors and what you want to explore about that through shadow work. Like, why do you? Do this certain thing? Cause usually you can track it back to something. It may not always be obvious at first, but usually you can track it back. Number three. List any instances in your life when you felt your shadow self-controlling your life and actions. This can be anything pertaining to boundaries. Your, your personal boundaries, violating the boundaries of others, or not being able to express your own personal boundaries. You know, the fear of abandonment. Any kind of dependency, whether that's, you know, codependency, alcoholism, addiction, anything that would fall under that rubric. Any compulsive behaviors or actions. How, anything, you know, how it's affected your relationships over the years. Because you'd be surprised when you look at some of the shadow things, like what it reveals when you look at kind of everything all at once. And looking at your emotional reactions and responses. Any actions against other people and any type of avoidance issues or accountability. Magical thinking, and I'm not talking about, since we're talking about, this is kind of within the rubric of witchcraft and magical practice. I'm not talking about magical thinking in that way, but it can overlap a little bit, but it's sort of like. Trying to think of a good way to describe magical thinking. Then, okay, it'll overlap in between. It's sort of like, I look at all the people and myself hands up guilty as well as the get your, get your ex back spell type things. Well. The magical thinking is that, you know, we're, we're soulmates and we're destined to be together and we're, you know. Maybe if I change this or do this or say that, and you know, we're perfect together and we're perfect. Well, okay, if you're not together and you broke up, obviously you weren't perfect together and you're trying to rewrite the narrative. And romanticize and. Find a magical reason that we're destined to be together, or this entity said we're, we're supposed to be together. Sometimes we have unconscious or subconscious projections into the work that we're doing. And anything that, and on this list, and anything else that may be just very specific to your life. So. Number four would be to look back on how you have felt powerless at different, different times in your life. Broken down by, you know, if you want to look at by like childhood, teenage years, adulthood, late adulthood, how, I don't know, however old you are. And whatever makes sense for you. My list is going to be different at 47 than it would have been at 24. So. You know, kind of looking at sort of sub-questions within that, have you tried to integrate your shadow during any of these times? Have you made excuses for your actions or promise of changing those behaviors like, oh, I'll stop drinking or I'll. You know, text you back and regularly and stuff like that. What patterns are you seeing, starting to see emerge as you're going through these questions? Number five would be to make a list of your goals in doing shadow work. And any bottom line behaviors or actions you want to address. A bottom line behavior would be like, don't, don't drunk text your ex. Whereas a top line behavior would be something that's positive that fosters self-love and self-care. Like I have the urge to drunk text my ex, so I'm going to. You know, take a bubble bath instead and, and, and meditate that kind of thing. So the next question, number six is what led you to do intense shadow work? So our roads all come from different areas and we. I mean, my intense shadow work just for me, I mean, it's been a process, I would say probably. Whether I was conscious of it or not, has been a process for me since about. 2010, 2011, somewhere in that area. That's kind of where I started mine. And you know, shadows can take a long time to integrate and you know, you might not work on them all at once. Or, you know, you might at some times need to work with. A therapist or a group therapy or something like that to really get through that. Especially if it's, it's big T trauma stuff. So. Moving on to question number seven, how have you justified your shadows influence and how would you choose to work on them going forward? And this can relate to an impact on family and relationships, your employment situation, emotional development. Finances, your spirituality, physical and mental health, morals, ethics and values. And the view of yourself in terms of acceptance, self-love and self-care and your overall big picture life goals. Now we, we covered. A fear of, the first question was what do your fears have to do in shadow? So in question eight, we, we. Delve into that a little further with right about the impact of fear in terms of your personal shadows, like what. Now that we're kind of working a little bit deeper there, like what is the specific fear of, you know. Quitting smoking or. You know, changing, working on, you know, a particular instance of trauma that happened in your life, like what fears come up for you in that? And number nine is. This is a helpful exercise to do and one that you can do. Anytime that you want to identify it is. You know, daily stress can impact our shadows and cause us to act out or beat ourselves up. Write an example of a daily stressor of how you were, and how you responded to it and how you felt about it. Like, you know, maybe your partner did something, you got upset and threw a shoe at them or whatever. And then you felt really bad that you did this. Confession of a person who used to throw things. Yes, there was an incident we refer to now as rice agedin, in which I hurled a bowl of fried rice across the room. I no longer throw things, TLDR. But you know, identifying those things, when you get frustrated, how do you act or act out? Because a lot of times those are shadow motivations. So the last question that we want to look at and hear is how do you think your life will improve? Once you start doing shadow work and begin to integrate your shadow. So that's kind of the. You know, month one, step one shadow work that we could do. We have a Discord server now, so I will put a link to that below. And for all of our membership premium content, I have special channels. I'm still working on getting the nuts and bolts of everything running on there. But like I would be posting the, you know, shadow work content there, but for now I'm just going to put it on my website. Since this is a newly launched, this is our first month of doing this. It's a newly launched premium content project. We will be working on putting together new shadow work project, products, kits and other resources. Our current catalog contains many products that are helpful. Helpful for doing shadow work. Most of our flying ointments or tinctures, we do have a specific shadow work flying ointment. And I also have, actually have right here is our shadow work crystal healing oil. And this is something like for the crystal healing oil, you like, if you want to get into that state and like put it. On your third eye, you put a little bit on, put on a candle, whatever, put a couple of drops in the bath before you do shadow work. That's one of our crystal healing oils that we have and we will have a few more products. Specific to shadow work released within the year, including a bath salt blend, tincture and elixir and incense blend. So. That aside, as I would like to state, since, you know, given the nature of doing shadow work. Legally, we here at Belladonna's Botanicals are not medical professionals. And we cannot diagnose, treat, write prescriptions or give medical advice for medical issues regarding to therapeutic or. Magical use of our products and service. The following has not been evaluated by the FDA and is for educational purposes only. Please note that any healing spells or healing energy work are considered complementary, alternative medicine by the FDA and not a substitute for traditional medical treatments. So. Yeah, disclaimers are fun. The FDA has not evaluated statements. I have this, this is from my website. On this website, no claims are made by Belladonna's Botanicals to the medicinal value of any essential oils, herbal or other products sold on this website or services, et cetera. The information presented here is for educational purpose only. On the magical and traditional uses of essential oils and is not intended to diagnose, treat, cure, prevent disease. You are responsible for understanding the safe, safe application of these products and/or services. So. Yeah, it's. But you know, joking aside about disclaimers or the pain in the ass of disclaimers is that. You know, we like to fly under the FDA radar on things like when I was doing more therapeutic essential oil stuff. Like I had to like, first you can't make like any kind of medical claims like, sure, this could, you know, help you sleep at night or, you know, you know. Take care of a headache, but I could, I can't say that legally, you know, with the FDA and then. Yeah, but it's not even that you could say it legally. You can't even say like the word. yeah, you, but it's not even that you could say it legally. You can't even say like the word headache. Uh, or, you know, it'd be like, then it became an issue of like, how do people search for something like natural, like, you know, maybe tag it natural headache cure, but I can't call it a headache medicine or anything, but TLDR. I'll end on a fun note, when, uh, a while back I was developing like some, uh, or I was in the development phase and I kind of quickly scrapped it because it became an issue of liability insurance. Um, for doing products, like some baby care products. This is more before I started doing like strict, you know, the magical stuff. And like, apparently I couldn't use the word diaper cream or diaper ointment. So I was planning on calling it baby butt hurt ointment. Um, because my sense of humor always guides me in making important decisions, but I babble on long enough, but anyways, so this is the sh- the shadow work for January twenty twenty three. And I hope you find this helpful. I would, since this is something new that I'm doing, I'd love any feedback or suggestions. And, um, in the coming months, we're going to explore more aspects of the shadow. And as we go step by step through, uh, really kind of identifying and working through that stuff. So anyways, have a good one. Love y'all.